Okay. Yep, all right.
It's okay. Get the problems out of me.
Okay, ready?
Yeah.
Welcome to your town meeting. The town clerk has informed me that we have met the quorum of 50 people at our last count. I declare the 2022 annual meeting in session. To honor the work that our service members do for our country every day, our invocation will be read by Long Meadow resident with a long history of service to our country, James Jimmy Gould, who served in the Air Force from 1961 to 1966. He is a member of the Long Meadow High School class of 1960 and a member of Long Meadow Post 175 of the American Legion. Jimmy?
We have come together in civil assembly as a community in a tradition that is older than our Commonwealth itself. As we deliberate, let us advocate for our positions, but not at the expense of others. Let us remember that there is an immense gap between saying "I am right" and saying "I believe I am right." Our neighbors with whom we disagree are good people with hopes and dreams as true and as high as ours. Let us always remember that, in the end, caring for each other in this community is of far greater importance than any difference we may have. As a proud member of Long Meadow Post 175, I am pleased to announce that on October 8th and 9th, we are hosting the Long Meadow Fall Festival on the town green. Further details will follow. Thank you.
Thank you. I welcome the Western Massachusetts Scout Troop 90 and 5090, Long Meadow Color Guard, who will be followed by Dagan Connolly, also an Eagle Scout, student representative to the school committee, model congress member, mock UN Club president, and to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. For those who are able or wish to do so, please rise.
Color Guard, advance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of these United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Kindly remain standing and offer a moment of silence, both to remember and honor veterans who have sacrificed for our country and in recognition of the tragic loss of Long Meadow High School senior Katerina Boshkovich. The National Anthem, Star Spangled Banner, shall now be performed by Long Meadow High School senior Chloe Flack.
Oh, say, can you see by the dawn's early light? What so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming? Whose broad stripes and bright stars through the perilous fight? O'er the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming? And the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air, gave proof through the night that our flag was still there. Oh, say, does that star-spangled banner yet wave? O'er the land of the free and the home of the brave?
I welcome you to Town Meeting, our town's legislative body. First-time voters and to our visitors, I offer a special welcome. Town Meeting is our local legislature, and for those who are newer to it, one of the functions of the annual meeting is its role in bringing community members together. This is in part accomplished at the start through celebration via our awards and recognitions, which we shall get to in a moment, followed, of course, by housekeeping, general announcements, and review of rules. But we also come together in this civic space to remember those we have lost in the last year. At a time when there's so much strife, with war raging abroad and the world having lost 6 million people to COVID, our country is on the cusp of 1 million deaths. Here in Massachusetts, we've lost over 20,000 people, nearly 2,000 of our neighbors, friends, and relatives in Hampton County alone. Numbers tell one story of loss, but it's not the only story. We mark losses in different ways, too. We remember people through the best they offered our town, through how their actions served the community. We remember Army veteran and former member of the Board of Selectmen, Robert A. Thomas, who died in June last year. We remember police captain Stephen Conboy, who served the town for 32 years, who passed away in September. We remember former school committee member, registrar, high school teacher, and decorated veteran Army Captain John J. Fitzgerald, who passed away in November. We remember former planning board member Richard Curran, who passed away in December. Also in December, we remember election worker Ethelyn Basell. We remember her colleagues Meredith Wheaton, also a senior center volunteer, Mary Jean Ryan, who both passed away in March, and Beverly Gray, who worked elections for 40 years, was a former teacher in town, also a member of the zoning board of appeals, who passed away this April. Finally, we also recognize the at times suffocating sadness that our community feels with the tragic loss of Long Meadow High School senior Katerina Kat Boshkovich. As a student athlete on the cross-country and track teams, volunteer coach with the Long Meadow Youth Track Program, she also offered her best to our town. Having just gathered on Sunday to recognize her loss, many of us will still remain at the sharp edge of sadness. To all those who are grieving, especially to the senior class, we as a community extend our sympathy. We remember the best these loved ones offered to our town, and we offer our best to you so that you may find comfort in the memories of the lives you cherish. I thank each of you for your willingness to be present today, as we keep the spirit of common good and kindness toward our neighbors in our deliberations tonight. And in the common refrain of my friend John, I urge us all onward. We shall proceed with awards and recognitions first, then some housekeeping and voting information after that. For now, I recognize Chair of the Select Board, Stephen Morantz.
The town of Long Meadow is deeply appreciative of employees in the town and our school department. There are over 600 full-time and part-time employees that support all the services that us, the residents, rely on. We extend a special thank to those employees who have left the town service this year. A complete listing of those names is available on the town website. We thank them all.
Thank you. I welcome Tim Casey to present the Historic District Preservation Awards.
The Long Meadow Historic District Commission this year voted to institute a new award to recognize those who have made an excellent contribution to either preserving their property or historically renovating it in a wonderful way. We have two awards for 2021 and 2020. The 2021 award goes to Bruce and Julia Cowley, and the 2020 award goes to Louis and Ruth Robin. If you're here tonight, I do have a certificate for you.
Perhaps not yet, but thank you very much, Tim. So some general housekeeping and rules of procedure to mention before we deliberate and vote on our warrant articles. In the event of fire, a fire alarm, or other emergency, exits are clearly marked in the four corners of the room. Should you need a hearing assistive device, inform a teller, one of the people wearing the yellow vests, or someone at the clerk's desk, and we shall loan you one. Visitors must sit in the visitor section. I see we have no visitors yet, but we may. If you need to, should we need to hear from non-voters with expertise or specialized knowledge for a project before Town Meeting, I will permit some non-voters to speak. I have done so in advance. These include town employees regarding issues relevant to their departments, and the following non-voters have received prior permission to speak: Burley Grant, Finn O'Connor, Joe Sapanic, and Peter Bobell. All department heads, directors, the superintendent of schools may speak, of course, on matters relevant to their department. So the other way that our community comes together through shared decision-making, which is accomplished through listening to each other, consideration of advantages and trade-offs, recognition that even if our position fails to win the vote, we have been heard. If our position wins the vote, we recognize that it's not a victory but a decision. We agree to adhere to a set of rules to guide our work. I turn to those now. The back of the warrant lists some of the rules of procedure that we will follow. These rules are from Mass. General Laws, our town charter, our bylaws, and this book called Town Meeting Time. To speak, wait for recognition from the moderator, then state your name and address. All remarks go to the moderator. Some motions may differ very slightly from the articles that are printed in the warrant, and we vote on motions that you hear, not on articles. Motions to limit or extend debate require a 2/3 vote. Our bylaws, however, require that if residents want to come to a vote right away, they can only make that motion after at least five people have spoken in favor and five against. And of course, the presumption is these are speakers from the floor, not the main speaker on a motion or those who provide answers to questions or who ask questions. Motions to reconsider or rescind are only in order if there is new information that has come to light during the meeting that would cause need for that. Motions to amend should be in writing. There are three microphones in the middle of the room and a center microphone here for elected or appointed board members speaking on behalf of the board or citizens speaking as lead advocates for an article. Citizens wishing to speak shall line up at each microphone, and I'll alternate among each line. And whenever possible, preference shall be given to those who have not yet had a chance to speak. If you are in line, please listen to your colleagues who are speaking. You will be wise to remember that people prefer hearing new information rather than So the green microphone is for those in favor of a motion, the red one is for those who are opposed, and the yellow one is for those with questions and motions. Should you have questions for how to do something, ask me. And I see that there's somebody already at the yellow microphone. Are you waiting to speak now, or? There's no cross-examination. If you have questions for a speaker or for a town official, ask me. Ask all your questions at once, and I will direct the question to who it should, who can best answer it. Comments from the center microphone take, are about two minutes, excuse me, from the center microphones are about two minutes, and all remarks should be concise and civil. We are using electronic voting devices at this meeting, and I will explain the procedures now. Everyone should keep their device on them at all times. If you need to use the restroom or stretch your legs outside, you must have that clicker and lanyard on you. Here's a bunch of things you should not do. No one is permitted to leave the gym without their voting device. You may not tamper with the voting device. You may not give the voting device to anyone. This feels like super happy fun ball, like you may not do this, 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 and this. When you leave the high school, you will be directed to place the device in a red bag that's at the back of those doors. You may not give the device to anybody. You put it in the receptacle yourself. Do not hand your device to any volunteer. Should anyone have trouble with the device, promptly raise your hand and a staff member will come to you. Otherwise, you can go to a help desk in the back. Voting is simple. When I announce that the vote is now open, you will press 1 for yes or press 2 for no. The other buttons, 3, 4, and 5, do nothing. The button with the paper airplane clears the screen. You will have 20 seconds from the moment I open the vote to when the vote is closed. If you try to vote before I open the vote, you will see a letter, either A or B. Once you've pressed 1 or 2 and the vote is open, you will see that number on the screen along with the word "okay" on the screen. This means your vote has been received. If you forget to vote, you forego that vote, just like in normal times. If you didn't raise your hand, you didn't raise your hand, you didn't vote. We will test the devices soon. If you notice any problems, raise your hand immediately. To test the devices, we have three sample questions, and we're going to audit the results. So I have conducted a random number generator and drawn five numbers before the meeting began, and if you have one of these clicker numbers, you're the lucky audit winner for today. You get to come up and show the town clerk your vote. She will verify, and you will verify, that it is as you intended, so we'll make sure that everything works appropriately. The strategy for doing this is we will have three questions. So I'm going to be asking the vote to be cleared now. By the way, to my left is Peter Bobell of Meridia, the company that has supplied these devices. To his left is Michael Barbieri, who will be running the system. So for our first test vote...
Can we stop this?
Yes, so we're going to clear that. Let's pretend the motion is chocolate is the best ice cream. Oh, I'm sorry, I haven't yet told you what your lucky numbers are. 1034, 1072, 1122, 1064, 1208. If you have any of those numbers, come on down. So 1034. Do you have that, ma'am? Come on down, all the way. This is exciting. 10, 1072, 1122, 1064, and 1208. So come on over here, right up front, please. So I'm going to be asking you to vote whether chocolate is the best ice cream. You all can vote, too. And then I will ask for you to show the town clerk your vote. She'll record it, and then we're going to show you the system. You'll verify, yeah, I pressed 1, or no, I pressed 2. Okay? So vote, vote your conscience. And then, once you've voted, please come to the town clerk. She doesn't bite. All of you come to, please come to the town, like literally come here and show.
Should we, should we open the vote?
Please open the vote, yes. The vote is now open.
I'm going to say it's two open.
So, and show?
One number, you.
1034.
Okay, so, does it, do you see the okay?
It's okay.
You can show it.
And stay, stay here for one more vote, just one more.
You press the, you will vote.
Okay. All right, now, do you want to see to verify that your vote is as you intended?
It's also on the big screen.
Oh, it's on the big, well, they're right here, so.
1034, that's how you voted.
Yeah.
1072, you were over here.
Yes.
And 1122, we need to clear.
Will you move the screen, please?
1122, we need to clear.
Okay, so the three voters announced that their vote was recorded correctly. We're going to now clear the vote. We're going to move on to a different question. We're going to do the same thing, just once more. He's going to clear it, yep.
He's cleared it, yep.
So, okay. Do you wake up before 8:00 AM?
This is Patriots.
Oh, this is the Patriots one? Oh, oh, oh. Will the Patriots win the Super Bowl this year? That was deflating. Sorry.
Is it open?
The vote is now open, yes. Okay. No, he, no, yeah. Do you see it here? You see your number here? We have one optimist in the group. All right. Is it as you recorded?
And what about the 1040?
10, 1122?
Yeah.
1072.
Yep, that's a no. All right.
And then we got to go back to see hers.
Yep.
I need 1072.
1072?
1072.
1072.
So it's correct.
No, I'm sorry.
Okay. Yes, you can go back now. Thank you to our voters. One of the things that you'll notice is that we're clearing the screen. This third vote, again, a demonstration vote, this is the 8:00 AM?
This is the, yes.
All right. For this is, this test vote will be how we normally vote. So this will be what it will be like when we're taking up actual business, okay? I want to be clear that we did this, we did this test where you could see how, you know, somebody voted with a red or a green, to make sure that you all have faith that this is recording your vote accurately. To comply with public records law, we do not keep records of how people voted. We clear it right away. So we want to make sure that you know that your vote is accurately recorded. I will declare what the count is, and then, once I've declared it, we clear the system. There's no indication that 1122 voted no. So for this last vote, this is, do you wake up at 8:00 AM? Do you wake up before 8:00 AM? The vote is now open. Press 1 for yes, press 2 for no. You have 20 seconds. Is the 20 seconds over? Are you keeping track? All right, the vote is now closed. The eyes have it, with 187 voting yes, 44 voting no, the motion passes. Congratulations, you're all the early risers. So that is the test of the system. We'll now switch it, and this will go to all anonymous voting. Your program indicates that we will anticipate a series of consent agendas, single motions to approve a series of articles with one vote. Should anyone wish to hold an article for separate consideration, call out "hold" when I call that article number, and we will take that article up in its regular order. The articles that are part of a consent agenda have been unanimously approved by the sponsoring board, and if a finance article, also by the finance committee. Any vote that received a split vote is not part of a consent agenda. Are you waiting to make a point of question, or are you waiting for the first motion?
The chair.
Sure. Name and address, please.
Michael Calick, 458 Williams Street. Madam Moderator, I have to question this entire voting procedure, this entire method that you've just explained to Town Meeting. It comes from a basic question of whether it was broke and whether it needs to be fixed.
Is that your question?
If I may.
We're not, we are not discussing the method of voting. This is the system we are using. There were chances to discuss it at demonstration sessions. Thank you, sir.
You didn't let me finish. I would like to finish what I wanted to say.
I asked what your question was. If it's a point of order, you can ask the question.
But there's no question on the floor. I'm talking about this method of voting that you're springing on Town Meeting.
That is not on the, that is, sir, that is not part of the agenda for the meeting. It is not proper, and you shall come to order and sit down.
I will not, I will not.
Now, that's your first warning. We shall now come to motion number one, Mr. Morantz.
I move to approve Articles 2, 3, and 4 as part of a consent agenda.
Is there a second? All right. In order to consider Articles 2, 3, and 4, if anyone wishes to hold any of these articles for separate consideration, call out "hold" when I call that article number. Article 2, Article 3, Article 4. None of these articles have been held. We shall now come to a vote on the consent agenda. We shall now come to a vote on the consent agenda. The vote is now open. You may press 1 for yes, 2 for no. Five seconds left. Press 1 for yes, press 2 for no. The vote is now closed. The motion passes with 151 yes, 14 no. Consent agenda number 2, Mr. Morantz. I can't, I'm sorry, could you say that again with the microphone on, please?
I move to approve Articles 7, 8, and 9 as part of a consent agenda.
Is there a second? This requires a four-fifths vote. If you wish to consider any of these articles, call out "hold" when I say that article number. Article 7. Article 8. Article 9. None of the articles have been held, so we shall come directly to a vote on consent agenda 2, to approve Articles 7, 8, and 9. This requires a four-fifths vote. The vote is now open. Press 1 for yes, press 2 for no. You have 20 seconds in which to vote. You keeping track of the time? Thank you. Tell me when there's five seconds left. Five seconds left. The vote is now closed. The motion passes, achieves the four-fifths vote by declaration, 207 to 21, 207 yes to 21 no. Consent agenda number 3, Mr. Gold.
Madam Moderator, I move to approve Articles 13, 14, 15, and 18 as part of a consent agenda.
Is there a second? If anyone wishes to hold any of these articles, call out "hold" when I call that article number. Article 13. 14. 15. 18. No articles have been held. This requires a two-thirds vote. The vote is now open. You may press 1 for yes, 2 for no. You have 20 seconds in which to vote. Five seconds left. The vote is now closed. The motion passes with a two-thirds affirmative vote of 190 to 31. Declaration. And I saw that there was somebody who was seeking to ask a question, but, I'm sorry. Consent agenda number 4, Mr. Gold.
Madam Moderator, I move to approve Articles 16, 17, 19, and 20 as part of a consent agenda.
Is there a second? The motion's been made and seconded. If anyone wishes to hold any of these articles, please call out "hold" when I call the number. 16. 17. 19. 20. No articles have been held. We shall vote on these all together. This requires a simple majority. The vote is now open. You may vote 1 for yes, 2 for no. You have 20 seconds in which to vote. Five seconds left. The vote is now closed. The motion passes with a majority affirmative vote of 215 to 17. Consent agenda number 5, Mr. Gold.
Madam Moderator, I move to approve Articles 21, 22, 23, 24, and 25 as part of a consent agenda.
Is there a second? The motion has been made and seconded. If anybody wishes to hold one of these articles, call out "hold" when I call that article number. Article 21. 22. 23. 24. 25. No articles have been held. We shall now come to a vote on the consent agenda that requires a two-thirds vote. The vote is now open. Press 1 for yes, press 2 for no. You have 20 seconds in which to vote. Five seconds. The vote is now closed. Consent agenda 5 passes with a two-thirds majority declaration, affirmative vote of 207 to 24. Consent agenda number 6, Tom Lacusa.
I move to approve Articles 26 and 27 as part of a consent agenda.
Is there a second? The motion has been made and seconded. If anybody wishes to hold one of these articles, call out "hold," and we'll consider it separately. Article 26. There was a hold? Okay. Thank you. Article 26 is held. Article 27, well, do we consider Article 27 separately? So, because one of the two has been held, we'll take up 26 and 27 at a later point in the meeting. So, the, uh. The motion fails then to do a consent agenda. So we're not voting on the consent agenda because there is no consent. Once, one of two is done, there's no motion. Consent agenda number 7, Tom Lacusa.
I move that Articles 28, 29, 30, 31, 33, 35, and 37 be, you know, part of a consent agenda.
Thank you, is there a second? The motion has been made and seconded. If you wish to hold any of these articles, call out "hold" nice and loud, and I will hold that one separately, and we'll take it up in the normal order. Article 28. 29. 30. 31. 33. 33 is held. 35. 37. So, the motion is to approve Articles 28, 29, 30, 31, 35, and 37 as part of a consent agenda that requires a simple majority. We shall now come directly to a vote. The vote is now open. You have 20 seconds in which to press 1 for yes, 2 for no. Five seconds left. The vote is now closed. The motion passes with a majority affirmative vote of 215 to 22. At the yellow microphone, yes?
Kurt Friedman, 24 Ridge. Madam Moderator, if appropriate, I want to ask, what is the status of Article 39?
We will come to Article 39 at the very end of the meeting, if that's, go ahead.
Depending on the status, I may ask that that article be moved further up in the meeting. So, I understand that it's gonna be withdrawn. If that's so, it'd be nice to know it now, because that one article is potentially a very, very important article to many of the citizenry. And at the end of the meeting, we may barely have a quorum. And so, if we can find out the status of that, if it's actually gonna be withdrawn, that would take no action. If it is gonna be heard, I might decide to entertain a motion to move it up earlier in the meeting.
One moment, please. If you would like to advance the article, then you can make that motion now. We don't disclose necessarily what motions are in advance for articles at the very end or any other time other than what they are properly in order. But if you wish to make a motion to advance an article, you may do that.
Madam Moderator, citizenry of voters of Long Meadow, Article 39 speaks about.
If you wish to make the motion to advance it, it is, it is a two-thirds vote to advance it.
I'd like to make a motion to advance Article 39.
All right. The motion has been made to advance. We're plugging it into the system. Hold on one second. First, we have to vote on whether to advance it. If that motion is approved, then we come to Article 39. The motion has been made and seconded. Now we will come to a vote on whether to advance the article. All those in favor, press 1 for yes, press 2 for no. The vote is now open as to whether to advance Article 39 to this point in the meeting. There's five seconds left. The vote is now closed. The motion to advance the article has achieved the two-thirds majority by 193 to 254. Now we shall come to Article 39. I said declaration. Yeah, I know, it's not right. Article 39, Mr. Morantz.
I move that we take no action on Article 39.
Is there a second? The motion has been made to take no action on Article 39. It has been seconded. You may speak to it, Mr. Morantz.
We feel that due to the controversial nature of this article, that more discussion, instruction, education, community-wide discussion needs to take place on it, and we'd like to have an article like this come back at the fall town meeting.
Any further discussion on a motion to take no action on 39? Are you waiting to discuss? Okay. So, seeing no further discussion, we shall now come directly to a vote on whether to take no action on Article 39. The vote is now open. Press 1 for yes, press 2 for no. You have 20 seconds in which to vote. This requires a simple majority. Five seconds left. The vote is now closed. The motion to take no action on Article 39 is approved with a 196 to 50 vote. We shall take no action on Article 39. We shall now come to Article 1. But, I'm sorry, at the yellow mic, go ahead.
Madam Moderator, Armand Ray, 96 Shady Side Drive. I move that we advance Article 36.
All right. The motion to advance Article 36 has been made and seconded. This requires a two-thirds vote. One moment, please. Oh, and it was Armand Ray? Yep. All right. You may speak to the motion to advance Article 36?
Madam Moderator, the reason why I advance this is just because with Article 39 not in here anymore, I think it'd be more appropriate to have the maximum amount of town meeting take action on this item. So that's the reason why my motion to advance.
This requires a two-thirds majority to advance. Seeing no further discussion, I shall open the vote on whether to advance Article 36. The vote is now open. Press 1 for yes, press 2 for no to advance the article. Five seconds left. The vote is now closed. The motion to advance Article 36 to this point in the meeting has been approved with a two-thirds majority affirmative vote by declaration. One moment, please. We shall now come to Article 36. Mr. Lacusa.
I move that the town vote to fund the community preservation project to provide funding for the construction of a skateboard park at Bliss Park in the amount of $350,000 to be funded from the community preservation undesigned fund balance.
Is there a second? The motion has been made and seconded. This requires a simple majority. You may speak to it, Mr. Lacusa, or have Mr. Grant speak to it, either way.
In 2020, the town approved a study for the design feasibility and potential locations of a skateboard park in town. Based on that study, the proponents now propose to have a skateboard park constructed. The location would be the current location of the two currently existing four clay tennis courts in Bliss Park.
So, we shall now hear a recommendation from the finance committee, the park board, and then the chief advocate for the article would like to speak. I just would like the finance committee recommendation, please. Could someone from the finance committee provide the recommendation? Yep. You have a microphone there, but-
Donald Griffith, Vice Chair of the Finance Committee. The Finance Committee voted 6 to 0 to not recommend the skateboard park as indicated in the warrant. The Community Preservation Committee approved the application in January, on January 27th of 2022 by a vote of 5 to 4. Thereafter, on March 21, 2022, the Select Board by a vote of 3 to 1 voted to recommend to the Finance Committee that the Finance Committee not recommend the Article 36 because of concerns relating to whether the proposal's environmental impact on Bliss Park, as well as water runoff, parking, and traffic issues had been adequately vetted. On March 30, 2022, the Finance Committee reviewed the town warrant, including Article 36. During the review, the Finance Committee heard from several community members, the Long Meadow Town Manager and members of various town boards and committees, including the Select Board, the Community Preservation Committee, and the Long Meadow Building Committee regarding the skateboard park proposal. In addition to the concerns raised by members of the public and town officials, several members of the Finance Committee also expressed concerns about the adequacy of the projected costs of the proposal, noting that the projections for several elements of the plan appear to significantly underestimate the cost. Accordingly, the Finance Committee voted 6 to 0 to not recommend Article 36 at this time.
Thank you. Is someone here from the Parks Board for the Park Board recommendation? Name and address, too, for the Park Board Chair?
Yep. Andrew Berkey, 32 Wilson Drive. I'm the Park Board Chair. Please excuse the outfit, I just came from practice. So on behalf of the Park Board, I express our unanimity in support of the skate park proposal, both for the general idea as a recreational option for Long Meadow and for this specific sighting of a skate park in replacement of the two north clay courts at Bliss Park. The proposed location includes a wide array of established recreational modes that will partner well with a skate park in support of all Long Meadow residents.
Thank you. We'll come to the, Alex Grant. You have five minutes along with your side guests here.
Yes, thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, Alex Grant, 54 West Moreland Avenue. I just want to make a few quick points before I turn this presentation over to the three boys whose idea this was in 2019 and who have worked for it ever since. Point number one, all the information, we can't possibly give you all the information in five minutes. All the study, the cost breakdown, the calculation about very minimal runoff by Dr. Berkey is all on our Facebook page, Vote for the Long Meadow Skate Park. So if we didn't address it, all the information is there. Second, you heard about a vote by the Select Board and who they heard from. They didn't hear from us. They didn't invite us. We didn't know that it was even occurring. Also, the Park Board was not on that list. The Park Board has been working on this for two years. Mr. Berkey has been part of this skate park working group, going through, working carefully with the expert who has worked on hundreds of skate parks, the person the town hired. I would ask that if you're going to give your trust to a board, please give it to the one that's been doing the homework, that's been listening, and has been working on this the most. Next slide, please. Okay. Point number three, there is a detailed cost breakdown as part of the feasibility study by Pilar Designs. The Finance Committee never asked to hear anything from Pilar Designs, never. I actually presented a video presentation to explain some of this. They didn't even listen to it. They didn't play it. They didn't hear it. Third, next slide, please. Legal liability. The law firm of Doherty Wallace, which is the one the town has been using for years, has issued a legal opinion as part of the feasibility study. And in it, it says, "It is likely that the addition of a skate park in town would not appreciably, would not appreciably increase the town's exposure to potential claims." And then point number four, the costs, ongoing costs. And again, if you were doing your homework, you'd know this because we had a public meeting. It's on YouTube. It's on our website. And the designer explained, because this will be a concrete park, maintenance costs will be very low, $1,000 or less. Compare that to the annual cost for the two clay courts that we are replacing. And I'll just tell, I don't know the specific amount that we're paying now, but I do know, because this is part of the public record, that in February 2006, the town manager's budget report advocated discontinuing paying the $8,000 per year. So 16 years ago, it was $8,000 a year to maintain the four clay tennis courts. This was in conjunction with a recommendation-
About two minutes left.
-that clay tennis courts have limited use and are increasingly becoming anachronistic. And I will turn this over to the boys.
I'm sorry, there's, this is, people are speaking. Is there a point? I have announced at the very beginning of the meeting that I gave prior permission to three non-voters to speak at the meeting. You'll have, you'll have your time back.
Okay, thank you.
Joseph Sopanik, 51 Fairfield Terrace. Three years ago, we wanted to see if we could have a skate park in Long Meadow. We love going to the Agawam Skate Park and other parks in the area, but we wanted one that we could have to ourselves. We gathered signatures. We spoke at town meeting. We presented it to the Park Board. The Park Board decided to support the skate park. In 2020, in 2020, town meeting approved a $15,000 feasibility study to study the site, the design, and the possible legal liability. Finn O'Connor, 556 Laurel Street. When our parents were kids, they would play outside until dark. These days, kids have so much technology, they need to be pushed outside to play. After the pandemic, we need physical activity. We need to play in our local parks instead of parents always organizing play dates. Not all kids play team sports like basketball and soccer. Skateboarding and scootering are more and more popular. Skateboarding is now in the Olympics. It's not a fringe sport. The design of the skate park is fun-sized. It's for everyone, from beginner to expert and kid to adult.
Burley Grant, 56 West Moreland Ave. An expert the town hired looked at all the possible sites in the town. The Bliss Park Tennis Courts was number one based on the criteria he used. The skate park expert has designed hundreds of skate parks across the United States. Bliss Park is in the middle of town, and we can get there by walking on the sidewalks or riding our bikes. It's safe to get there, and it's near other things kids do, like basketball, baseball, and the playground, and the pool when it gets fixed. Using the tennis courts means we already have a flat surface and we don't have to cut down trees. That keeps the cost lower and keeps the park beautiful.
Thank you. Let me turn the lights back on. All right, folks, and I appreciate that. We, we don't jeer, and we don't cheer. So I invite you, please, to listen to the normal order. We'll now turn to the, you folks can sit down. Mr. Grant, and you can sit down now? Yep. And we'll now turn to the gentleman at the red microphone. Name and address, please.
Stephen Metz, 171 Coventure Lane. I speak in opposition to this article for several reasons, but mainly, there, we've all noticed that the town's tax rate is close to the top for the state. They're proposing spending over a third of a million dollars for a facility that's obviously not going to be used by a whole fraction of the town. That a third of a million dollars, when I can't even get my sidewalks fixed, I think is egregious. Thank you.
Thank you. At the green microphone.
Chris Rich, 25 Arlington Road.
Ooh, sorry about that.
I think one thing that the pandemic has really taught us is the need for connection. And our community does a great job with team sports, with-
I'm so sorry. Try once more?
Our, our community does a great job with team sports, with football and baseball and track, as we've seen with this weekend, the support of the track team and the connection that those team members have. As a parent of a child that is not interested in team sports, I am so thankful for the skate community. For the past years, I've, the past six years, I've been driving to Agawam to take my son to a skate park. And I would love to see Long Meadow support these kids that are not interested in team sports in the same beautiful way that we do kids that are in team sports. Thank you.
Thank you. At the red microphone.
Thank you. William Welch, 25 Meadowbrook Road. I'm not here to tell you whether a skate park is a good thing or a bad thing. I'm here to tell you that the cost is completely wrong. So how do you know that? Well, you know it if you went to their expert's feasibility study. It's not a cost study. It's just a study on where to put it. And they listed examples of some of the skate parks that they've done. So six weeks ago, their expert for a skate park up in Greenfield, they just passed the budget for it, 11,000 square feet, $780,000. At that price point, this skate park would be over $1 million. They also did the skate park in Saranac, New York, 5,000 square feet, $340,000. At that price point, this skate park would be over $1 million. Their expert did the skate park up in Turner's Falls, 7,200 square feet, $390,000. At that price point, this would be $812,000. But it doesn't stop there. They're the experts for the Worcester, Mass skate park, same size, 15,000 square feet, $2 million. You can go across the country and you can look at what the skate parks cost. Fairfax County, Virginia, 15,000 square feet, $1 million. Newark, Ohio, 15,000 square feet, $1.2 million. So when you sign up or when you consider your vote, it will not cost $350,000. I can't explain the motives for the expert and why they severely-
And we don't talk about the motives at all, sir.
But simply want to stress, when you make your vote, it will not cost this town $350,000. One final point, the Finance Committee actually invited Mr. Grant to appear several weeks ago-
Your time is up.
-and he declined the offer.
Time's up. Thank you. At the green microphone. You know what? Because you did say his name, I will invite Mr. Grant up. I would urge members to remember our bylaws and our rules, that we do not address people here. We can, we can talk about the previous speaker, but once you invoke somebody's name, they have a right to speak. So I, please, I, we are voting on a motion. We are not voting on people. Mr. Grant, you had raised your hand to respond. You may offer a brief response in regard to that particular point, and then we shall move on from that.
Of course. The statement that I declined the offer is not correct. I prepared a video presentation. It's on YouTube. I emailed it to the members. I spoke to Mr. Lamb specifically. He watched it. Nobody else did. It was made available to everyone. I could not come that particular day due to work commitments, but I did present a video presentation that was not played.
Thank you.
I did not decline.
Now at the green microphone. Yes, sir.
Pelter, 1, sorry. Ricky Pelter, 139 Edgewood Avenue. To address what the previous speaker said before, Mr. Grant, we're not talking about those other skate parks. We're talking about the Long Meadow Skate Park. Where, as one of the boys said, it's going to be fun-sized, and I know myself because I was on the design committee. Those parks have bowls, they have stairs, they have digging, they have, you know, more than what we're trying to do. That's why our price point is where it's at. That leads me into my main point, saying that I've been skateboarding in this town since I was the boy's age. With my friends up there, we skated my street, Edgewood Avenue, we skated the shops, we skated Blueberry School. We didn't skate a skate park because we didn't have one. And I can't tell you the amount of times I've had angry citizens, police, coming at us, telling us not to skate where we are. So if we can't skate on the streets, where can we skate? I wished I had a skate park when I was their age, and now that we're putting the work in, I'd like to see it passed. Do it for the kids. Thank you.
Thank you. At the red microphone.
Thank you. My name is Alan Grossnick. I live at 80 Ridge Road. I'll be fairly brief. I've been playing tennis for a very long time. In fact, in 1966, I was the tennis pro for the clay tennis courts. I'm not against the skateboard park. What I am against is where it's going to be located, to take away tennis courts that are perfectly fine. Lately, the courts have been in disrepair, but I've been assured by the Park Department that they're going to be fixed. With five other good locations, I just don't understand why you want to take away good tennis courts and put a skateboard park there. Thank you.
Thank you. At the green microphone.
Tim Casey, 741 Laurel Street. I grew up here. And when I grew up, I played team sports. I had no interest in skateboarding or any of those sorts of things. But I recognize that being a teenager and being a pre-teen in this town at times can be slightly boring, because I remember that myself. And I think that having a place where kids who can enjoy themselves in our parks, not doing things that could otherwise get them in trouble, is a worthwhile investment. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. We had not had anybody at the yellow microphone. We do now. Mr. Friedman?
Madam Moderator, I'd like you to request that the proponents have a full opportunity at this time to respond to why the proposed location is the one that they are proposing.
So the question is regarding why the location is where it is?
Why is it proposed that the proposed skate park be located on the existing clay tennis courts?
Thank you. Mr. Grant?
So there were basically two assessments. One was done by the skate park working group. Then a separate one was done by the skate park expert. Looked at a wide array of sites. We looked at Glenbrook. We looked at Turner Park. We even looked at the old DPW site. And each one had big problems with it. The biggest one for a place like Turner is that it was much, much more expensive because of all of the excavation and all the site work you'd have to do. The Bliss Park tennis courts, you're starting out with a flat surface. The other point of Bliss Park, and again, this is all part of the feasibility study. I cannot possibly go into the same level of detail that Pilar Designs did. There's like all these different criteria, and they're graded out on each point. But the other thing is we want it to be safe. We want people to be able to get there by walking. We want to get there by scootering and by biking. And that way, you can, and it needs to be central. So for example, going down to the old DPW site would not be safe, and it would be out of the way, and it wouldn't have very many people going to it. The problem with Glenbrook was that it was a school, and what's going to happen when school's in session? We looked at the site of the senior- at the site of the Senior Center in another part of it. The drainage was bad. It would have cost a ton of money. So there are a lot of reasons, and a lot of it has to do with keeping costs down and for it being in the best place where there are other recreational activities taking place. And again, it's all graded out just in the same way that we've selected other projects like the DPW and the Senior Center.
Is it on? Town manager? And then we'll get to Ms. Bergeron.
Thank you. Town manager Lynn Simmons. I am not in support of Article 36 to provide funding for the construction of a skateboard park at Bliss Park. To clarify my opposition, I neither support nor oppose the construction of a skate park in Long Meadow generally, but I believe that the process that has led to this article being on tonight's warrant is deeply flawed. From its early stages, the project has suffered from a lack of meaningful community engagement, outreach, or a needs assessment. A project of this scope deserves to involve all of the stakeholders. There has not been enough engagement with the DPW or the Parks and Recreation Department to identify feasible locations, understand operational impacts, or learn how this project may fit into current initiatives. From the information that has been made available to town staff and to the public, the project is not yet ready to fund for the construction phase. The design document does not provide any fundamental understanding of the scale and the systems of the project, including how stormwater will be managed for this completely impervious structure. The $350,000 opinion of probable cost does not include development of design development documents or construction documents. These will be additional expenses that are unaccounted for in the warrant article. Who would be responsible for removing the existing tennis court fencing and infrastructure? Even if the project were ready for the construction phase, the applicants are also misinformed regarding the amount of town attention and labor this project will require. The CPA application that generated this warrant article states that because construction of a skate park requires specialized skill and experience in having built other skate parks, town employees are not expected to be involved in the construction of the skate park. While DPW laborers may not be literally building the skate park themselves, lost my spot, the construction project would require daily oversight by the DPW Engineering Department. Construction oversight is required of any construction happening on town property. This is to ensure the project is built according to specification. Additionally, the department of the bid, the development of the bid proposal would require substantial labor from Long Meadow's only procurement officer. Finally, the maintenance of the skate park is estimated at $1,000 a year, but it is not clear if this $1,000, if this $1,000 covers material, DPW labor, or both. The maintenance estimate is for a design with no specified scale, so it's unclear how accurate that estimate can be. Last fall, I submitted a letter to the Community Preservation Committee respectfully asking that they pause the funding of projects at active recreation area facilities to allow time for an active recreation area conditions assessment. It was Article 3 earlier in tonight's warrant. The CPC honored that request in all applications except this one. The active recreation conditions assessment will allow us, the town, to understand how and where a skate park could fit in with our other facilities. Let me reiterate. I neither support nor oppose the construction of a skate park in Long Meadow. My opposition to this article is related to the incomplete process, lack of public and town participation, and deficient design documents. This project is not ready for public funding, and I do not support Article 36.
At the red microphone, please. Bergeron? It should be on? It's not on now? One moment, please. We're getting someone to fix it. Great. All right. Name and address, please.
Mary Beth Bergeron, 497 Inverness Lane, Long Meadow. I am the chairman of the Building Committee for the Town of Long Meadow. Because of the directive from the Select Board a number of years ago, our job is to advise, oversee, have some input into all vertical construction projects. And because of that, I did attend the forum that Mr. Grant addresses. And I did get a copy of the feasibility study. And I did speak to our procurement officer and got a copy of the RFP for the skate park. I will back up with our town manager just said. The study is incomplete. It is inappropriate for a vote here at town meeting. There's not enough information. The gentleman who spoke before me?
If I, if I may interrupt?
Yes.
This is, it followed the proper process.
They did.
So I want, I want to just correct the record on that front. Something that is before town meeting, this is, this is a...
Correct.
This is not an improper process.
If I, if I, if I said that, I didn't mean that. What I meant was, when reading the RFP, there were certain requirements for, under Phase 1, and those were not met. For example, they wanted hourly rates in a number of hours to construct, quantity of materials to, for the construction, the concrete, et cetera. And those are not included in the cost estimate. And I do have a copy of the cost estimate as well. I agree that there is no doubt, that there is no way that that can be built for $350,000. Additionally, there is no line drawing schematic of the skate park. There is a pretty picture in the feasibility study, but there is no line drawing as required under the RFP. So I would urge anyone, especially considering we just approved Article 3, to fund a study of the needs within the town of our Park and Rec Department. And I think that this is very premature. It's, it's just not the right time to be looking at this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Hello? Yellow, at the, at the yellow microphone?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Larry Starr at E1 Williamsburg Drive. I don't know tonight whether this will pass or not, but I do have a proposal to modify it. When we decided to bring the ambulance, I have it in writing.
If you have a motion, make the motion.
Yeah.
And then you could speak to it after it's been seconded.
Okay. So this is the rewritten motion. I move to see if the town will vote to fund... I amend the motion to read as follows. I move to see if the town will vote to fund a community preservation project to provide funding for the construction of a skate, a skateboard park at Bliss Park in the amount of $250,000 to be funded from the Community Preservation Undesignated Fund balance, provided the proponents of said skateboard park first raise a minimum of $100,000, which must be turned over to the town in order to unlock the $250,000 from the Community Preservation Undesignated Fund balance.
Mr. Starr, the reason I'm consulting with council is because it is my understanding for Community Preservation Act dollars to be spent, that the Community Preservation Committee must approve, must... Can you hear me now?
Yes, now.
It is my understanding that the Community Preservation Committee must approve all projects that are voted on at town meeting, and that they may not be amended. So, so I'm going to double check with town council on this. And what is your answer? He confirms.
Really?
So I cannot allow that motion. It is not in order.
All right. Thank you.
Sure. Not, we have a lot of people in line, so we'll, we'll get through them first. Hold on one moment. At the green?
Do you want me to go ahead?
At the green microphone?
Okay. I'm Kathy Mullins, and I live at 123 Wheel Meadow Drive. And I just would like to speak out in support of the skateboard park because I think that kids deserve a fun and safe place to go out and play and be kids and have a good time out there. Outdoor activity should be encouraged, not discouraged. Thank you.
Thank you. At the red microphone?
Andrew Fox, 29 Lorenz Street. Madam Moderator, being that the proposed location for this skate park is within a residential neighborhood, it is surprising and disappointing that direct notification of abutters did not occur prior to any meetings to discuss this. With most, if not all, other projects and boards in town, direct abutters are always notified. A project such as this will certainly affect the neighborhood, and particularly noise will be a concern. A better location for it would certainly be at either Wolf Swamp Fields or at the Blinn tennis courts in the Commercial District, not in a residential neighborhood. Additionally, the proposed $350,000 will construct the project, but where will the money come from in the future to maintain and repair it? Previously, there was a request for a gazebo in this same spot years ago, but it was turned down as the grant money would build it, but the town had no funds to maintain and repair it. Years ago, there was also a request to install a temporary winter ice rink at Bliss Park, but the town would not allow it because the supposed danger of the sport, and therefore the need for the town to carry additional personal liability insurance, which it did not want to spend the money to do. Does the town have the liability insurance to cover the injuries that are sure to occur at this facility? If not, where is the money going to come from for this? Is this facility going to be fenced so it can be open and closed at appropriate times? And who is going to do that? Or is it going to be open 24/7?
Come to a conclusion?
Is it going to be lit? The noise and hours of operation and supervision of these things are of great concern to abutters in the neighborhood and is why residents should have been directly notified long ago.
Thank you.
With the lack of information and due to the inappropriate location, I would certainly urge a no vote on this article.
Thank you. The green microphone?
Andrew Berkey, 32 Wilson Drive. So even after the hatchet job we just received from the town manager...
Excuse me.
...I still speak tonight to express my excitement. I'm done now. At the opportunity before us to continue our commitment...
Me, come to order and let me speak. All right. Emperors flare, it happens. We do not refer to other people's speech in that way. Wanted a chance to explain it. I appreciate you coming to order, sir. Thank you. You may continue.
I still express, express my excitement at the opportunity before us to continue our commitment to town, hopefully, to inclusive, diverse recreation, and to provide space for kids who are un and underserved by our current sport landscape. Initiated in 2019, as you've heard by a group of fourth grade boys, this skate park proposal represents the best of us, our children dreaming of something bigger than themselves, and a multitude of volunteers working together in support of that dream. This collective passion is evident in the scope and heart of the park proposal and design. The park is designed to be learner-friendly, no large ramps and no bowls. It also uses the space to accentuate the landscape it occupies rather than forcing itself upon us, curves rather than hard lines. And it is placed next to a pool, a playground, ball fields, trails, a basketball court, and the remaining clay courts. It is deliberately co-located for multi-age and multi-generational use. Unfortunately, this proposal has also brought out the worst in us. Rather than see this park as an opportunity for partnership, some members of our community have seen it as a battlefield, as a way to continue promoting an exclusive view of recreation. This views, view sees Bliss Park as the sovereign domain of a small group of insiders, where outsiders and outside ideas can only be threats. The project itself is irrelevant. The implication is that it is not our park, but theirs. Other members...
I'd like you to avoid characterizing the opposition's motives, please. You can talk about why the proposal is a good proposal, or why it's not a good proposal.
Even when accurate?
It's not for public discussion.
All right.
You can cut that part of the speech.
Even when accurate. Okay. So we have a choice to make. We can see a skate park, an idea birthed by our kids, as an opportunity, an opportunity to diversify our recreation, an opportunity to be more inclusive, an opportunity to repurpose and reshape a corner of a park. Or we can see only threats, a threat to my vision, a threat to my park. I choose to see opportunity, and I hope you will join me. Please be our partner and vote yes.
Thank you. The yellow microphone?
Louis Robbin, 942 Long Meadow Street. I move the question.
The motion to move the previous question has been made and seconded. This is only proper when there are five people who have been in favor and five who have spoken against. I've confirmed with the town clerk. The count has reached five and five. We shall now come directly to a vote on the, on whether to call the question. This requires a two-thirds vote. This is not a vote on the main motion. This is only a vote as to whether we'll stop talking about it. You clear? All right. The motion to call the question requires a two-thirds vote. It is not debatable. The vote is now open. You may vote one for yes, two for no. Twenty seconds. And again, this is a call of the question, not the article. Five seconds left. The vote is now closed. The motion to call the question has been approved with a two-thirds majority affirmative vote by declaration, 235 to 42. We shall now come directly to a vote on the main motion on Article 36. This requires a simple majority. The vote is now open. Press one for yes, press two for no. You have 20 seconds in which to vote. Five minutes, five seconds left. The vote is now closed. The motion fails to achieve a majority vote with 101 yes and 177 no. Article one. We turn to Article one. It doesn't feel like Article one, but really, we're at Article one. For anyone who is leaving, please make sure that you take your lanyards off and you drop it in the red bucket. Do not give it to anyone. Once you leave the meeting, you may not come back in. Just making sure you know that.
Article one?
Article one. Mr. Moran?
I move that the town choose Francis Miffett, William McGurk, and Aaron Kobler to administer the William Goldwraith Bequest.
Is there a second? Motion's been made and seconded. You may speak to it.
The Goldwraith Bequest is an endowment fund left to the Town of Long Meadow for assistance to the worthy poor of Long Meadow. The Board of Trustees administers this fund and makes expenditures from, from the accruing interest for applicants experienced financial hardship. The trustees are chosen annually by town meeting.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, we shall come directly to a vote on the motion under Article one. This requires a simple majority. The vote is now open. Press one for yes, press two for no. The vote is now closed. The motion passes with 161 yes and 10 no. Affirmative vote. All right. Now we're doing, yeah. We turn to Article five. All right, now we're doing, yep. We turn to Article five. Mr. Morantz.
I move the town that the town vote to appropriate the sum of $200,000 to add a pool liner to the Greenwood Pool, including the payment of all costs incidental and related thereto, and that to meet this appropriation, a treasurer with the approval of the select board is authorized to borrow, set him out under and pursuant to General Law 44, Chapter seven, or pursuant to any other enabling authority and to issue bonds or notes of the town.
Did you mean to say Chapter 7.1? Yes.
The reason for this article, Greenwood Pool has-
I'm sorry. I was just making sure that you read the general law correctly. Did I miss you saying one?
Forty-four of seven-one.
Thank you. Is there a second? The motion has been made and seconded. You may speak to it, Mr. Morantz.
Okay. Greenwood Pool has significant cracks in the concrete walls and the deck as resulting of its age. The pool is estimated to be leaking 15,000 gallons of water per day. This is costing us 80 bucks a day and so adding water will a, as this says, will prevent water leaks and also will increase the age of the pool's use.
Thank you. Finance Committee recommendation? Is that microphone?
This is recommended by the Finance Committee.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Before we come to a vote on this, an announcement yet again. I have someone's credit card. And you won't believe this, but it's the same person as before. I don't want to say that person's name. If you know who it is, you know who it is. Unless I don't see, if nobody comes forward, it's the same person. Jack, Jacqueline, come on up. I can't accept this. Yes, thank you to the honest people. There is discussion on this.
Can I ask a question?
Sure. Yes, thank you.
A question to the proponents. As an alternative, why wasn't simply repairing the pool and installing a well considered so that there wouldn't be the cost of the water and to avoid paying $200,000, is the pool repairable instead of putting in a liner which will ultimately fail sometime in the future?
I'll ask Ms. Simmons to come.
Can't hear you.
We're just getting the microphone switched out. Thank you. Go ahead. Oh, no. Yeah. Try that one. Kevin, can you try this one? Oh, my God. It is on now.
Musical microphones. The pool has been repaired over the years. The last time it was done, two years ago, it continues to crack. There is no liner in it now. There has not ever been a liner in it and the concrete continues to cracks even when repairs are made just as recent as two years ago.
Thank you. Further discussion? Yes, sir?
Yes, Louis Robyn, 942 Long Meadow Street. I have a question. Why, why wasn't the Community Preservation Fund consulted about paying for these, paying for this expense instead of this coming from general funds?
Ms. Simmons? Do you have the answer to this? Okay. Who might? Who might? Who might have it? Actually, I'll ask the CPC Chair, Stephen Weiss. Thank you.
Stephen Weiss, 25 Hilltop Road. I'm the Chair of the Community Preservation Committee. The simple answer to the question is that nobody submitted an application to us in this round of funding. This is why we weren't asked. We did fund about five years ago, I think it was about $225,000. Don't quote me on that exact number, but a fairly large number to do renovations to the pool. I think it was about five or six years ago, but in terms of a liner, we simply weren't asked.
Thank you. And Ms. Simmons?
If my memory serves me correct, I believe that by the time we figured out the extent of the cracks and the leaks, the CPC application process had already closed. We just received the quote for the pool liner itself over this winter.
Further discussion?
Louis Robyn, 942 Long Meadow Street. I regretfully must oppose this because it should have been paid from the Community Preservation Funds. The winter, if it was, I would think the Community Preservation Committee could have acted on this in a prompt manner. And I'm reminded that the reason this town voted to belong to the Community Preservation Funding, which was because the state would pay us money if we had added taxes for this. So we're foregoing money that the state would pay or compensate us for for making these improvements. So I just feel this is a poor expenditure of funding of money and I must regretfully oppose it for that reason.
Thank you. At the green microphone?
Yes, Mary Beth Bergeron, 497 Inverness Lane. I have some experience with the background behind this pool. They've never put water in it. It's a concrete pool. It's pretty simple physics. When the ground freezes, on the exterior walls pushes in, creates these cracks, which is why the pool has had to be repaired over the years. Typically, one wouldn't put a liner in on a concrete pool because you leave the water in it and cover it. However, now the pool is in such a condition that putting the liner in and funding the cover is the appropriate method to salvage this pool over another 10, 15, possibly 20 years. It is the only pool that has been open last year. It'll be the only pool open this year. There is no plan to do this work now because we need to open the pool for the kids. However, in September, if we fund it, we will have the availability to get the liner installed, get the water in the pool, and get the cover on so that it's safe. I strongly support this warrant article. It is the appropriate and needed method for taking care of the pool at Greenwood Park. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, we shall come directly to a vote. This requires a two-thirds vote. Vote is now open. Press one for yes, press two for no. You have 20 seconds in which to vote. Vote is now closed. The motion passes with a two-thirds declaration affirmative vote of 164 to 30. We now turn to Article six. Mr. Morantz.
I move the town vote to transfer from available funds in the treasury the sum of $30,000 to purchase a pool cover for the Greenwood Pool.
Is there, the motion's been made and seconded. You may speak to it.
Right. The Greenwood Pool does not currently have a pool cover and the water is drained yearly. Best practices recommend some water be left in the pool for preservation of the concrete infrastructure. Given that we just put the liner in, adding a cover will reduce the amount of water evaporation that occurs, cut down on chemical consumption, cleaning time. Cover also adds a level of safety to help prevent accidental entry into the pool and help protect the new liner, what we just voted on, from the sun's UV rays.
Finance Committee recommendation?
This is recommended by the Finance Committee.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, we shall come directly to a vote. This requires a simple majority. The vote is now open. Press one for yes, press two for no. You have 20 seconds in which to vote. The vote is now closed. Motion passes with a majority affirmative vote, 171 to 14.
Madam, Madam Moderator, I move that the town vote to fix the fiscal year 2023 salary and compensation of the moderator at $1,000 and the select persons at $2,000 each to provide for a reserve fund and to approve the fiscal year 2023 operating budget totaling $76,513,613.33, itemized as follows. General Government, $1,925,023.49. Public Safety, $5,766,567. Planning and Community Development, $244,464.77. Schools, $37,395,859.36. Department of Public Works from General Fund, $4,740,438. Community and Cultural Services, $1,865,863.37. Debt Services and Town School Employee Retirement Benefits, $18,092,653. We're subtotal with the General Fund of $70,030,868.99. And the Water Enterprise Fund funded at $3,179,235.10. Sewer Enterprise Fund funded at $2,225,538.24. And the Stormwater Enterprise Fund funded at $1,077,971 for a total of $76,513,613.33. And to fund the General Fund, $70,030,868.99 be raised and appropriated as follows. $70,030,868.99 from general taxation. And to fund the Water Enterprise Fund, $3,179,235.10 to be raised and appropriated as follows. $3,179,235.10 from water receipts. And to fund the Sewer Enterprise Fund, $2,225,538.24 be raised and appropriated as follows. $2,225,538.24 from sewer receipts. And to fund the Stormwater Enterprise Fund, $1,077,971 to be raised and appropriated as follows. $546,747 from stormwater receipts and $531,224 from general taxation.
Is there a second? The motion has been made and seconded. You may speak to it, Mr. Gold?
The annual operating budget must be adopted and funded for fiscal year 2023 that begins on July 1, 2022. The Select Board's budget was reviewed by the Finance Committee as required by the town charter. The Select Board's budget as printed is a balanced budget as required by Massachusetts General Laws and the charter. The Select Board's fiscal year 2023 recommended budget utilizes, only utilized 1.75% of the allowable 2.5% increase authorized by Proposition Two and a Half, which creates an estimated $396,769 in unused tax levy capacity. The Select Board's proposed budget is $76,513,613.33. This budget achieves the goal of limiting fiscal year 2023's tax increase to no greater than 1.75% of the allowable 2.5% in accordance with the Finance Committee's firm recommendations that tax rate growth be constrained in order to delay an intersection with the looming $25 per thousand mil rate tax ceiling.
Any further discussion? I'm, I'm sorry. Finance Committee recommendation. Sorry about that.
This is recommended by the Finance Committee. We would like to thank the Select Board for working with us with the 1.75% against the 2.5% levy. We were under that and we hope that that will help us to avoid the fiscal cliff that Mark was talking about with the mil rate.
Thank you. At the yellow microphone, please?
Stephen Matts, 171 Carver Lane. It's just a question. A note that in the introduction of the warrant, it says that the inflation rate of 3% was anticipated. It's 5% now and probably going to go higher. 5% is about a, according to this budget, be around a million and a half. So how much does this inflation, increase in inflation affect your calculations? Thank you.
Is this, are you asking for the town manager or the Finance Committee? Where do you want your-
I don't know who, probably the town manager.
Okay, that's what I was thinking too, but I wanted to just check with you. So the question was about the percentages. It was, it was hard for me to hear you. I'm sorry.
Sorry.
Speak right into the mic.
I'm sorry. The anticipated inflation rate, according to the front page of the warrant, says they're expecting a 3% inflation rate. It's now upwards of 5. And even at 5, that adds another million and a half to the budget. I just wonder how they're going to account for that.
Okay, so the question is about how the inflation rate was 3, now it's 5. I invite our CFO to come to the front to explain. And name, please?
Hello, Jennifer Leiden, Finance Director. We did initially start with a 3% increase because of inflation. Obviously, based on what's happening in our economy right now, we're looking at 7 and 8%. We'll look, we'll work strategically with the department heads to determine the priorities that are set within the budget and determine it with the town manager and the Select Board. If there's anything that we can't afford, we just won't be doing it this fiscal year.
Thank you. Any further discussion? At the green mic?
Peter Landon, 5 Meadow Brook Road, Audit Committee. I'm speaking in favor of the 23-town budget as put, mentioned by Mr. Gold, and I want to compliment the parties on their spirit of deliberation. But one cautionary comment. The term-level service shows up frequently in the, in the warrant in other places and it has a very positive ring to it, but in some glaring cases does not mean that it's adequate service. In the case of most of our buildings, grounds, and parks and ballfields, the DPW budget amounts are clearly inadequate and oversight lacking. Continued poor maintenance depletes asset values and reflects poorly on the town. Take a close look at the landscaping during the daylight around the front of our high school and around it, and the middle schools, parks, and half of our ballfields. In last year's, if last year's budgets were inadequate, level service components compound the issue. And I, and I've, but I want to go on and compliment the town. They've commissioned to study both, I mentioned earlier in Article three, and also, which is at a broader level, but to look at the staffing and the chronic problems of turnover in our DPW. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, we'll come directly to a vote on the motion under Article 10. This requires a simple majority. The vote is now open. Press one for yes, press two for no. You have 20 seconds in which to vote. The vote is now closed. The motion passes with a majority affirmative vote of 154 yes and 10 no. Turn to Article 11. Mr. Gold.
Madam Moderator, I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $578,218 for the purposes of establishing a wage settlement account to cover the fiscal year 2023 DPW reorganization, DPW, police, and clerical collective bargaining agreements, non-school, non-union wage agreements, as well as the implementation of the Wage and Classification Study.
Did you mean adjustments rather than agreements? Wage adjustments? In the second to last?
I will accept that it's, yes, non-union wage adjustments.
Okay. That's what I thought I heard. Is there a second? Motion has been made and seconded. You may speak to it, Mr. Gold.
With the exception of the fire collective bargaining agreement, all other non-school collective bargaining agreements are currently in negotiations, expiring at the end of fiscal year 2022. Wage adjustments for DPW, police, clerical, and non-school, non-union personnel are not built into the fiscal 2023 budget presentation. This appropriation will provide funds to cover wage adjustments as determined by the town manager under the Town Charter 5-2D. The Finance Director will only release funds from the wage settlement account to the proper budgetary line items upon notification from the town manager of the wage adjustments allotted in ratification of the collective bargaining agreements.
Finance Committee recommendation?
This is recommended by the Finance Committee.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, we'll come directly to a vote on the motion under Article 11. This requires a simple majority. The vote is now open. Press 1 for yes, press 2 for no. You have 20 seconds in which to vote. Five seconds left. The vote is now closed. The motion passes with a majority affirmative vote of 135 yes and 14 no. Article 12. Mr. Gold.
Madam Moderator, I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate the following amounts for capital projects, and that any remaining amounts from the capital projects be deposited into this Capital Stabilization Fund. From raise and appropriate for fiscal year 2023, for project development, $25,000. For project reserves, $10,000. For fire truck replacement reserves, $75,000. For the center school flat roof replacement phase 1 of 2, $695,000. For the police station kitchen upgrade, $55,000. For double folding wing mower for the DPW, $115,000. For pavement preservation, $635,000. For sidewalk reconstruction, $400,000. For total Capital Stabilization Fund appropriation request of $2,010,000.
Is there a second? The motion's been made and seconded. You may speak to it.
Yes. Annually, the town appropriates funds for capital expenditures. The fiscal year 2023 capital plan is funded at 3% of the estimated general fund revenues less debt exclusion taxation as allotted for in the Select Board's capital funding policy.
Finance Committee recommendation?
This is recommended by the Finance Committee.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, we'll come directly to a vote. This requires a simple majority. The vote is now open. Press 1 for yes, press 2 for no. You have 20 seconds in which to vote. You have five seconds left. The vote is now closed. The motion passes, 135 yes, 8 no. Majority affirmative vote. We'll now take a leap through the warrant to Article 26. Mr. LaCusa.
I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $180,775.00 for the purpose of paying the fiscal year 2023 District Improvement Financing Debt Service.
Is there a second? The motion's been made and seconded. You may speak to it.
The District Improvement Financing, DIF, statute, Mass. General Law, Chapter 4, 40Q, requires the town, requires the town to annually budget for the debt service related to the Dwight Road Maple Street DIF program. At the 2017 ATM, the Dwight Road Improvement District was created, and a $2.5 million bond was issued in August of 2018 for infrastructure improvements within the improvement district. Each year, the debt payment needs to be appropriated. The fiscal year 2023 debt payment for the Dwight Road Improvement District is $180,775.00. In fiscal year 23, the total estimated taxes due are $205,000, resulting in an increase of $24,225,000, or $24,225,000 to the town's general fund, along with the additional $20,000 given to the town by East Long Meadow as agreed upon in a 20-year DIF municipal agreement.
Finance Committee recommendation?
This is recommended by the Finance Committee.
Any further discussion?
Pete Landon, Audit Committee. The question is, when we originally approved this financing, Mr. LaCusa, I believe the projections were that we would get way up beyond 100% to get the recouping of the debt service for our portion of the complex, the commercial complex. So is that still on projections to have the debt service completely covered and not covered by the General Fund? It seems like the development of the project over there has been stalled for a period of time. Thank you.
Mr. LaCusa, do you wish to answer that, or shall I go to the, I think I prefer to go to the Finance Director?
We could go to the Finance Director, but I know we've been gradually collecting this money to cover the, the money that was used to repair the roads and do lights in that area. But are we on target as far as our?
The Finance Director, please.
Yes, currently, we are recouping over 100%. We are recouping $24,000 additionally. So we get $204,000 in taxes, and we only pay $175,000 for the debt service. That's on a declining schedule. That starts declining in FY '28, down to $160, then down to $150,000. So as the years progress, we'll be receiving even more taxes over the 100%.
At the yellow microphone, yes.
Louis Robyn, 942 Long Meadow Street. I, sorry, I just have a question. You read, when you were reading the explanation, you said that the, there was a resulting, resulting in an increase of $24,225,000 to the town general fund. Should that mean $24,225?
Yes, you're correct. It was misprinted in my document. It is $24,225.
Otherwise, it would have been quite a bonanza. All right. Seeing no further discussion, we'll come directly to a vote. This requires a simple majority. The vote is now open on the motion under Article 26. You may vote 1 for yes, 2 for no. 20 seconds to vote. Five seconds left. The vote is now closed. The motion passes with a majority affirmative vote of 137 yes and 3 no. Article 27. Mr. LaCusa.
I move that the town vote to establish a funding limit for the town's Council of Aging revolving fund, with payments from the fund to be expended by the Director of the Council of Aging up to $85,000.
Is there a second? The motion's been made and seconded. You may speak to it.
Effective November 2016, as part of the Municipal Modernization Act, revolving funds created pursuant to Massachusetts' General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53 E and 1/2, as established by the town's bylaws, must have an annual expenditure limit set at the town's annual town meeting. This article sets the annual expenditure limit.
Finance Committee recommendation?
This is recommended by the Finance Committee.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, we'll come directly to a vote on the motion under Article 27. It requires a simple majority. The vote is now open. Press 1 for yes, press 2 for no. 20 seconds to vote. Five seconds left. The vote is now closed. With 132 yes and 8 no, the motion passes with a majority affirmative vote. Article 32. Mr. LaCusa.
I move that the town vote to fund the community preservation project to provide upgrades to the Edgerly Building at Wolf Swamp Field, and to provide dugouts and other field amenities at the field, to the amount of $10,000 to be funded from the Recreation Open Space Fund balance, and the amount of $98,700 to be funded from the Community Preservation Undesignated Fund balance.
Is there a second? Motion's been made and seconded. You may speak to it.
This project will provide funding for upgrades at the Edgerly Building at Wolf Swamp Field, such as kitchen upgrades and ADA compliance, and to provide dugouts, storage sheds, and other amenities at the fields.
Finance Committee recommendation?
This is recommended by the Finance Committee.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, we'll come directly to a vote. It requires a simple majority. The vote is now open. Press 1 for yes, 2 for no. 20 seconds in which to vote. Five seconds left. The vote is now closed. The motion passes, majority affirmative vote of 127 yes, 11 no. Article 33. Mr. LaCusa.
I move that the town vote to provide funding for the repair and/or replacement of windows at Center School in the amount of $10,000 to be funded from the Historic Preservation Fund, and the amount of $290,000 or greater or lesser sum to be funded from the Community Preservation Undesignated Fund balance.
The motion's been made and seconded. You may speak to it.
The windows at Center School are approaching 30 years old. They are energy inefficient. Many of them are inoperable by school staff and need to be repaired or replaced. The determination of the scope of the work is ongoing, and this project will provide partial funding for the anticipated work to be supplemented with the ARPA relief funds and other sources.
Finance Committee recommendation?
The Finance Committee does recommend this article. I think a little bit about process, Madam Moderator, if I could, with the Finance Committee?
Yes.
So the Finance Committee has been working very closely with all the town boards this year, as they normally do. Prior to the vote by the Community Preservation Committee, we both looked at all of the submitted projects that were looked at initially. We also looked at the projects after they had been voted on by the board. The Chair of the CPC and myself have been in contact throughout the process. I have included my board in on any communications between the CPC and our board. And then when we had a very, a very, March 30th was our, the vote for us when we voted on the articles. I was not there at that meeting, but we did invite everybody who had a CPC-approved project to come to, to advocate for their project at that time. Invitations were sent out to everybody. Some had declined for work reasons, some declined because, like, the bird boxes seemed like a pretty good idea to some people. That's my daughter's article, so that's the reason why I say that one. So based upon after that, we had a very lively discussion at that meeting, followed up with our board members. We understand that there is lots of input that went into how this was decided and approved. In the end, it was the feeling of the Finance Committee that the town manager was the best arbiter of how to proceed with those funds. We needed to get the project in under the CPC, under the timelines, and made the dollars available to the town manager to use her best judgment as to how to proceed with, proceeding on getting the center school windows replaced. So just a little background on how that happened.
Further discussion?
It is recommended by the Finance Committee as stated.
Thank you.
Yes, Madam Moderator, I'd like to make a motion.
Name and address.
Mary Beth Bergeron, 497 Inverness Lane. I hereby move that Article 33 be referred to the Select Board for report to the next town meeting, and to consider this project be funded as either a bonded capital project, an application to be prepared for submission to MSBA, or other funding mechanism to be determined.
Is there a second? The motion has been made and seconded. I want to note that a motion to refer is different than a motion to amend. You may recall earlier, I did not allow a motion to amend on a CPC article. A motion to refer to committee is a different beast altogether. So just a note as to that process. You may speak to that motion.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. When this project was initially vetted by both capital planning and community preservation, as well as the building committee, through, in cooperation with the DPW, the anticipated total cost of the project would be, for replacement of the windows, would be $1.2 million. In this interim period of time, the town manager, along with DPW, decided to hire Hill Engineering to do a study of the windows and to get a, an estimate for those windows. So a project that started off as $1.2 million is now at, as of this morning, when the estimate came through from Hill Engineering, at 3.390, $3.4 million. So almost triple what we had, what had been submitted to capital planning, community preservation, et cetera. And it is a reflection of the times that we're living in, with material costs having increased so significantly, et cetera. And because the funding that had been allocated for this project, some, most of the money coming from the ARPA funds, and some of the money coming from community preservation, and some coming from capital planning, this really needs to go back to be vetted again as far as finances are concerned, to fund this project for the town.
Any further discussion? And this is on discussion of the motion to refer. At the red microphone?
Thank you. Again, Stephen Wise, 25 Hilltop Road, Chair of the CPC, also on the Historical Commission, and the Building Demolition Delay Committee as well. I think it's important, I pose this motion, and I want to give the, the meeting a little bit of the sense of what we did. We actually took a tour of the building with the principal, looked at the windows, saw the condition of the windows, and they're, they're in need of repair. The second thing is that this is a, a function of timing. The process, when the application was submitted to us, the, the investigation of whether all the windows needed to be replaced or whether they could be repaired was still ongoing. We decided to actually change the application as it came to us a little bit to make, so that the windows, so that it would allow $300,000 of CPC funds to be used to either replace or repair the windows, which would be a much lower repair the windows, which would be a much lower cost. But we felt that making this money available now was the best thing for the town, while the town goes and tries to figure out where, what the full cost of it would be, and where that money was going to be coming from. But if this is pushed off to another day, this funding is not available during this next fiscal year. We thought, and we voted, to make this money available to the town to help repair and replace the windows. Thank you.
Thank you. Further discussion?
Mary Beth Bergeron, 497 Inverness Lane. Just to comment on the previous speaker's concerns, we are, this is, this...
Are you, are you making, so at that microphone, you can ask questions?
Yes.
Or you can make motions?
Okay.
If you have neither, and you'd like to speak in favor or opposed, you can go to one of those. But he didn't ask for a question, he raised his opposition.
I'm just pointing, I don't know where to go, because I'm in favor of the replacement windows.
So why don't, well, there was somebody else who is in line, so why don't you get in line to talk about that, and then you can talk about it there?
Can I let her go?
Yes.
I yield my...
I gotta yield it. Just to clarify, this is not putting it back into the Select Board's hands for anything other than how to put together the financing. The Hill Engineering Report states very clearly that the windows should be replaced. We are supportive of that.
Thank you. At the yellow microphone, yeah, Peter Landon.
Right, 5 Meadow Brook. The question, I overheard all these discussions, it was, there was air handling and air quality issues at Center School that went along with the window situation, and I want to know if they're both being addressed together, because the windows were getting over exercised by moving them up and down to get the proper air quality for the kids during the day. It seems like to, you know, deal with a million-dollar project on the windows, we also maybe even foremost want to get the air quality and air handling issues solved at the same time. Thank you.
Thank you. So the question is, will the air quality issues be addressed with this? Is this something that the town manager's office can address? Or, Facilities Director?
Hello, Facilities Director, Nick Droganis. HVAC is not being addressed through that article.
Thank you. At the green microphone, please.
Thank you, Larry Starr, 81 Williamsburg Drive. I don't think anybody is against this. The problem is, the report came in today at $3 million, three-plus million, and we think the report is actually probably closer to $5 million, because the cost of actually making the repairs was estimated at one hour per window with one man, and that's just not reasonable, for given the size of these windows. They didn't realize what they were quoting. So it's a much bigger item. This is a $300,000 allocation. It's a drop in the bucket for this piece. We should be looking at how to get the whole thing done, and this will not do it. It needs to be done, but this will not do it. Therefore, referring it back to study it and figure out how are we going to replace those windows, and maybe look at the air conditioning systems as well, is what this motion's about, and that's why we need to pass it. It's that simple. Thank you.
At the yellow microphone?
Again, Stephen Wise, on behalf of the CPC. I guess I'd like to have a clarification from Town Council. The decision earlier, which I think was right, was that there can't be amendments to CPC articles on the warrant. I'm not sure, I guess I'd like to have a clarification about whether a CPC article can be referred or delayed, or whether it has to be voted on at town meeting.
I will first inform you that it is my ruling that I can allow it, and I will ask for the Town Council to supply his opinion.
So I don't think that the last amendment involved spending CPC funds. This one, I think, is referring it to the Select Board for seeking other financing. I don't think they can alter or spend the CPC funds without approval from the CPC, but I think that they can take, the meeting can vote to send it to them to consider other funding sources.
All right, and I guess just one further clarification, but that would also mean that if this motion to refer it to the Select Board does pass, then those funds are not available during this fiscal year until the next town meeting.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Mark Golden, 129 Avondale Road. I just want to clarify what the motion says. I think it's the right thing. It was literally noon time today or thereabouts that we got this quotation for $3.4 million for a project that, you know, we just didn't know the cost of it. I'm not, you know, there was, if you will, a ballpark estimate by our maintenance team, and I think that, you know, I looked at the detailed estimate, the windows alone are, the low cost for the little window, little windows were $3,800, the bigger windows were up nick, what, $8,900, $9,000 kind of thing for the bigger windows. So it's not like, well, let's take the $100,000 and replace a couple of windows, because we probably won't be replacing the ones we really, really want to replace, which are probably the more expensive ones. This referral also gives the town the opportunity to take advantage of state funding through the Mass School Building Authority, who specifically allocates money for repairs such as this, and I think we can also potentially use that opportunity, as somebody suggested, and bring into the fact that the HVAC system in Center School is really the driving force behind why the windows are open so much, is because they won't get excessively hot. So I think, taking another look at it, yes, it does delay it a little bit, but frankly, this amount of money isn't going to do what we really want to do, and the way to do it is to do it right, whether it's by bonding or MSBA. So I urge everybody to vote in favor of this motion.
You, at the yellow microphone?
Yes, just a quick question. Mike Kirby from Longwood Avenue. I know when the renovations for Center School were going on, there was a lot of input that was being made by the Historic District Commission, and they had a lot of input on the windows at that time, and I'm just curious whether or not that, those questions have been dealt with as far as the Historic District Commission being involved with this, and whether or not that's added the expense to what's going on with this right now.
I'll allow Tim Casey, the Chair of that committee, to respond. You can just speak from there, doesn't matter.
They're just too short. So the current, and Nick, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but it's the Pella Architectural Series windows which would be used for this project, which are in our design guidelines as an acceptable window.
And, so, Nick Droganis, Facilities?
Yes.
Okay.
A product decision has not been made yet, but would be presented to the HDC.
Okay.
Right. Mr. Kirby, so...
So they have not consulted with us yet, but we have design guidelines for the type of windows that would be used, and they, when that time comes, we will be hearing about it.
Any follow-up questions, or you...
So it's been approved by, and just...
No, it has not been approved, and it wouldn't be approved until there had been money made available for it, and then they would go through our process afterwards.
And just to be clear, we're voting on a motion to refer at this point? If the motion to refer is approved, then we'll move on to the next article. If the motion to refer fails, then we can continue discussing the merits of the proposal. I don't want to get too far into the merits of the proposal, other than the motion to refer, but do you have a follow-up question?
No.
Okay. At the green microphone?
Yes, Tom Shea, 81 Green Meadow Drive, right around the corner from Center School. Couple of things, and I spoke to the Facilities Director. Can you speak to the Center School boiler being replaced, in essence concurrently with this? Hopefully some, you know, HEVAC modifications, so that we're not heating the school, you know, 24 hours a day in the winter? If someone could speak to that, and then...
So you're at the microphone to speak in favor of this proposal?
I am.
Of the proposal to refer to the Select Board? So you can make a statement in support if you're there?
Okay.
If you'd like questions, you can go to the other mic, but we...
Okay, sorry.
We take turns, that's all.
Okay, let me just, I'm speaking in support of this.
Thank you.
The original cost estimate, looking at the online, was back last November. We're hearing now it's triple the cost. I don't think it's a good idea to replace just a third of the windows. We should do this right. The previous speaker mentioned various sources of funding. We have a grants manager, these are for energy efficiency. I think we should take the time, do it right, and look for additional money, and I think the ARPA money will be available next year, if I'm correct. We can look to the CPC money as being available, but I think we need to do this right, do it once. These windows that are there now did not last like they should, and we should replace them all at once, and look for alternative sources of funding. So I'm in support. Thank you.
Thank you. At the red microphone?
Liz Bone, 34 Elizabeth Circle. So this, these windows have been talked about since Andrea and Feneff was GPW or Facilities Manager. That was at least 15 years ago. This project has been being put off for year after year after year. We don't have enough money, we don't have enough money. All those teachers and children have been in the school with single-pane windows for the, and yes, it was a bad decision when the windows were first put in, but that's not our fault right now. And so, so those kids are, you know, the heating costs are sky-high, it's not energy efficient for the school, the kids are cold, the teachers are cold in the summers, the teachers are hot, the kids are hot, and I don't think we should be putting this off. We need to start dealing with it now. If anybody here has a window completely open in the winter, I would like to see you wait 15 years to replace it.
At the yellow mic?
Yes, thank you. Dave Marinelli, 9 Over Brooklyn, and my question is, what is really the effect of referring this to the Select Board? I'm on the CPC. We voted to designate our funds to go towards windows. If we then refer this to the Select Board, does the Select Board then have the ability to spend those funds if it feels it's appropriate, or do those funds come back to the CPC for next year's round? That's my question.
The, if the motion is approved to refer to the Select Board, the Select, I'm just going to read the motion once more. The Select, refer to the Select Board for a report to the next town meeting and to consider this project be funded either as a bonded capital project, an application be prepared for submission to the MSBA, or other funding mechanism to be determined. They do not get to spend the money. They must prepare a report to be delivered back to us next year, the next annual town meeting, I'm sorry, the next town meeting, so the one in the fall, October 25th, mark your calendars. And they must prepare a report and make a proposal at that meeting. The town manager wishes to answer that as well, or answer something related to that? Go ahead.
Just for information, these windows are not eligible for MSBA accelerated repair program. They're too young. They have to be 30 years old, and we're not quite there yet, so that is not a viable funding source for us at this time.
Thank you. Further discussion? I'm sorry, we're waiting for the mic to decide to come back on.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yes, so as a follow-up question, I just want to be clear. If we vote to refer to the Select Board, that's the same as voting against this article. This money will not be spent the way the CPC decided.
That's correct. That's correct. Further discussion?
Hi, my name's Steve Wallman, I live on Pinewood Drive. I have a hypothetical question. Let us suppose we vote this motion down, and then we vote on the main motion and vote yes. Number one, is the Select Board then obligated to spend that money, or can they hold it in abeyance? And number two, even if we vote this motion down, can the Select Board look at it anyway to seek other funding, because it's tripled in cost?
I can answer the first part. First, the, if we vote the motion to refer down, or if you vote, I'm not voting, if you vote to vote it down, then we come to the discussion of the main motion. If that main motion is approved, then we do what the article says. We are going to be spending that money. The Select Board can do other things, if it wish. Nothing is stopping them from doing that. The other question that you had, forgive me.
The other question is, if we vote this motion for referral down...
Yep.
And we vote yes on the main motion, I had asked if the Select Board was obligated to spend that money, or could they hold it? And could the Select Board still look at other sources of funding, even though the motion to refer has been voted down?
They cannot hold the money?
They must spend it.
They must spend it. And I'm getting Town Council nodding, yes.
In this fiscal year?
In this fiscal year, yes.
But they can still look at other sources of funding, even though this motion had, theoretically, is voted down?
Yes.
Okay.
At the red mic.
Now that I understand the motion, I'm Dave Marinelli, 9 Over Brooklyn. Now that I understand what it does, I'm of course opposed to it. The CPC examined these windows. They're not all in the same condition. Some are able to open, some are not. Some are broken with exposed glass edges covered with duct tape. You know, if this is not enough money to do all of the windows, it's enough money to repair some of the ones that are most desperately in need, and I think this money should be spent for the purpose that the CPC voted for it. So if the town wishes to pursue other sources of funding, once they hit 30 years, that's fine, but I would like to give the town the ability to spend this money to repair the windows that need it the most.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Again, Stephen Wise, Chair of the CPC. Respectfully, when you said that the funds have to be spent, I don't think that's correct. The Select Board doesn't have to spend the funds. What they do, if this motion is voted down, and if the article itself is approved, then the funds become available. And then, if it takes, during the course of the year, while we're trying to, while the town is trying to figure out what the whole project is, if some of that money is needed to repair or replace some of those windows, and it turns out to be less than $300,000, and the funds are eventually not needed, they will come back to the CPC eventually, like any other project. They're not obligated to spend the funds, but the funds will be available to the town. But they won't be available to the town if the motion is, if the article is referred.
I'm going to direct this to our Town Council. You're on again. Congratulations.
Steve, I think I'm going to defer to you on this one. I know, we had to look at this recently, a couple of years ago. I think that you can't use to spend it, but I think they might be able to use other funding and then return it to the CPC. I'm not 100% on that one, I apologize.
Hi, good evening. Kristen Carnahan, 311 Farmington Road. And I apologize if this is a tedious question or a redundant one, but as a, to be explicit, are there any motions or amendments to motions available to us this evening to allow for it to be referred back to the Select Board as originally proposed in the initial motion by Ms. Bergeron? And include within that the caveat to have available a vote in the future, in the fall meeting, for the CPA funds that are the point of the original article?
So to get really weird, yes, you can amend this motion to refer. We get into some murky waters, because then people, I mean, you're attaching all sorts of conditions to conditions to conditions. A cleaner option is to vote one way or the other on this motion. If you vote to refer, you vote to refer. I'm not stopping you from issuing a motion to amend, but a motion to amend must be in And then we come first to a vote on the motion to amend, and then we, if that's approved, we come to a motion to refer. If that fails, then we come back to the... If that fails, then we come back to the motion on the main article. You got all that? So that's the answer to your question? Oh, no. The follow-up? Sure. Maybe the mic will allow it?
Maybe.
Yep.
Okay. If the motion to refer moves forward with a vote?
Yep.
Independent of the CPA funds, may a subsequent motion be made to request a vote on the CPA funds at the fall town meeting?
I don't think, no, I don't, because it's not, no.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Gold?
I'm just going to try to clarify a couple of things that were said by using an example. A lot of questions were asked with what would happen if we rejected this. So I want to refer to the, people remember the Blinn tennis courts, which are the ones right here near the high school. Several, many years ago, I guess, I don't know, eight, 10 years ago, the CPC approved a limited amount of funds to renovate the Blinn tennis courts. It turns out that when we got the bids, it wasn't a sufficient amount of money. So the, and we say the select board, it wasn't the select board so much, it was the town. It was the DPW. It was our town engineers, the town system. We decided not to repair two courts, which we probably could have done, but literally hold the money and not spend it. Okay? The next year, we got a new bid, appropriated additional CPA money. It really took three or four years before we came up with, I forgot what it was, Steve, 1.2 million, something like that. $900,000 before we did it. And so, the question is, will this money be spent, will it not be spent? You know, I'm not trying to pass the buck here, but it really is a scientific or engineering decision. You know, you can replace a couple of windows, but are you really going to save money? Like, you know, is it worth replacing a couple of tennis courts, as opposed to doing the whole project at once? You know, the bid we saw today was for a lot of different windows at once. If we do it fewer, is it more expensive? That's a decision down the road. So I don't want to say, yes, they'll do it, or I don't want to say, no, they won't do it. As was indicated, the money is available. It's available to be spent if you need to, but I think looking at the Blinn courts would be a great example for people to take for how it was potentially going to be used for a project that's got expanding costs, if you will.
Chaya M. Kosofsky, 795 Converse Street. If this motion passes, is it reasonable to assume that a plan could be ready for the next town meeting, and everything would be in place to vote on a complete project?
Let me ask the town manager on that, or the CFO, Finance Director? Ms. Lydon?
Thank you. That is a reasonable request, and that is exactly what we're striving for. We have available funding through ARPA. We have available funding through bands and bonds, that we can supplement this $300,000 to look at the project holistically. So this would be one portion of the funding coming from CPC, and then we'll use, hopefully use other funding sources to fund the whole project.
If I may, Ms. Lydon, that's only if the motion to refer fails, and you were voting to approve Article 33. Okay. Mr. Kosofsky?
Yeah. Arlene Miller, 680 Skynet Road. I think the simplest way through this maze is to not do any of the amendments, do the original motion, and then it's very clear. You don't have to spend the money. You have the money. That's what we want you to have. And then you can plan with that money in hand. Thank you.
Go ahead. Mr. Starr?
Oh, thank you. Again, the bid that came in today was three-plus million dollars. It's probably going to be four when we get all of, or five even, when we get all. A $300,000 allocation as a partial piece is simply silly. We need to figure out what it takes to do it correctly, not in piecemeal. We've learned in all the other projects we've done, that piecemeal doesn't work. We need to fix it. There's no diff, there's no controversy over that. But the way to do it is to do it right. Let's plan it. Let's figure out how it's really going to cost, and then let's get those funds that we need to fund it, and bring it back to the town, bring it back to the next meeting. And this is the project. This is how we do it. This is how we pay $4 million, or whatever it is. Thank you.
Yes, sir?
Yes. Tim Casey, 741 Laurel Street. I'm the Chair of the Star District Commission. My question to the Chair of the Permanent Building Committee is, for this bid, is it, or for the solicitation from Hill that was received today, was it to repair and replace the windows, or was it simply to replace the windows?
Ms. Bergeron?
It is to replace the windows. The Hill Engineering made the determination. Part of the problem with the windows, the balances are broken, and they're no longer available. They no longer sell them. Although, maybe some of the windows could be worked on to make them operable on a temporary basis. The bottom line is, the windows really do need to be replaced, and we are going to need to fund that replacement in relatively short order. So the town's job is to find how we can fund this project. And I'd like to see that report come back in October, so that we can vote on the expenditure of those funds, however it is that they feel that they can put that together. That's what this motion is about.
Thank you. Are you, so real quick, and then we'll go to the yellow mic?
Yes. Tim Casey, 741 Laurel Street. I speak in opposition to this because I would like to give the town the discretion to use money right now to repair if necessary, and then hold it, and then use it to replace. You know, I completely understand that this project is going to be many more times what we originally thought it was going to be, and I appreciate that. But I would like to give the DPW the discretion to use the funds to plug holes now, and then we can talk about it, fall town meeting, to come back to get more money, to get this whole thing done.
Thank you. Further discussion? Nope. Are we ready to vote? All right. So just as a reminder, we vote first, well, no, we vote on a motion to refer. I think it's a simple majority. Yep, simple majority. If the motion to refer is approved, we go to the next article. If the motion to refer fails, then we come back to the main motion on Article 33. We don't have to keep talking about it if that happens, by the way. But if you want to, I'm here all night. All right. The vote on the motion to refer is now open. You may vote one for yes, vote two for no. 20 seconds to vote. Five seconds left. The vote is now closed. The motion to refer fails with a 46 to 76 vote. A second? So it's a majority negative vote on the motion to refer. We shall now come to discussion on the main motion on Article 33. Are you ready? All right. So now, we'll come directly to a vote on the main motion under Article 33. This requires a simple majority. The vote is now open. Press one for yes, press two for no. You have 20 seconds to vote. You have five seconds left. The vote is now closed. The motion passes 98 to 23. Majority affirmative vote. Just a quick compliment to y'all. That was some real heavy-duty thinking, and I appreciate the approaches that you took to the deliberation. Thank you. Article 34, is that correct? Mr. LaCusa?
I move that we take no action on Article 34.
Is there a second? The motion has been made and seconded. You may speak to the motion to take no action. Otherwise, we can defer to the proponent, if you want to.
Craig Carr, 397 Long Meadow Street. The Long Meadow gardeners applied to the CPC to replace the fence behind the Storrs' house. And because the fence was so rotted, it's already been taken down, and everyone from the Historical Commission, and the gardeners, and the library are thrilled with how it looks without the fence. And so, it took care of itself.
In case you were wondering. Any further discussion?
I'd like, for the record, to comment in Casey 741 Laurel Street. I do not have a application for a certificate of appropriateness to amend the previous one issued to simply remove the fence. We had approved a certificate to remove the current fence and replace it with the one that we're voting on here tonight. So I would suggest that we either, we approve it for the sake of currently what we have going on is illegal.
Further discussion? The plot thickens.
The fence is on the property that's owned by the library, and the library voted to remove the fence.
Further discussion?
Mary Roganis, 22 Warren Terrace. I am the President of the Storrs' Library Board, and I was at the hearing at which this was discussed. The library board had requested that the fence be removed, and the request to replace it was then made, and that was approved instead of ours. But at the time it was approved, I asked if it could be removed if it wasn't built. And the answer that I got from the Historic District Commission was yes, it could be, or that they approved, that that would be okay. And that's not what I'm hearing tonight.
Thank you. Further discussion?
Fair fight. The certificate that I wrote, so I wrote it, and I'm just saying, the way it's worded, says to remove and to replace. So unless there is, and maybe, Mary, this is where...
If you can direct comments to me, please. Thank you.
Sorry, not in my area. To the President of the Storrs' Board's point, we could have, if requested, done an amendment to the application, and then only had it remove, not replace. But the problem is, is we didn't receive an application for an amendment, and we didn't vote on it.
Thank you.
That's the issue.
Further discussion? Nope. If we're ready to vote. The motion to take no action requires a simple majority. All those in favor? I'm sorry, old habits die hard. The vote is now open. Press one for yes, press two for no. You have 20 seconds to vote. Five seconds left. The vote is now closed. The motion to take no action is approved 94 to 19. No action has been taken on Article 34. Our last article of the evening, Article 38. Mr. LaCusa?
I move that the town vote to fund the community preservation project for a study of the Old Town Hall to determine the work needed to preserve it, and the estimated costs and the amount of $10,000 to be funded from the Historic Preservation Fund balance.
Is there a second? The motion's been made and seconded. You may speak to it.
The Old Town Hall is the oldest town-owned building in Long Meadow. It is in need of extensive preservation efforts. This study will determine the repairs that are needed and their estimated costs.
Any further discussion? I'm sorry, Finance Committee?
This is recommended by the Finance Committee.
Any further discussion now? Seeing none, we shall come directly to a vote on Article, the motion under Article 38. This requires a simple majority. The vote is now open. Press one for yes, press two for no. 20 seconds to vote. You have five seconds left. The vote is now closed. The motion is approved, 102 to 8. Majority affirmative. We have one more vote left to do. Who knows what that vote is? Ah, you're close. A motion to dissolve is in order. So moved, all right, seconded. This requires a simple majority. Yes, we still have to do this to dissolve this meeting. So the motion, unless there's any discussion, I don't see any, the motion to dissolve is in order. The vote is now open. You have 20 seconds to vote. One for yes, two for no. You have five seconds left. The vote is now closed. 97 to 6. The annual town meeting is dissolved with a majority affirmative vote. I'll hang around with the six of you for a while. Take care and have a good night.